Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is December fourteenth, 2020. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. I would like to ask you to join me in a moment of silent reflection as we remember Peter Alfano, a custodian at Rochambeau from 1983 to 1998; Jack Armiento, a skilled laborer with the district from 1989 to 2011; Hans Friar with the district from 1977 to 1993, first as Assistant Director of Facilities and then as Director, and for the 20 children and the six adults lost eight years ago at Sandy Hook. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ricker. Next, I'd like to move on to some brief comments from the board. Does anyone have any brief comments to share? Go ahead, Kane, and I'll follow.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just want to thank the folks in the community that have been reaching out and sharing their experiences regarding hybrid learning. I know we've been receiving quite a number of emails recently. And I know as I learn of positive cases and the need to quarantine staff and students, I know that everyone is making a sacrifice to ensure our students receive the best education that we as a district can provide during a pandemic. I see the lengths my own children's teachers are going through daily to engage and stimulate them and to provide some sense of normalcy, and it is completely inspiring. And I think while we look beyond the pandemic at the promise of a vaccine, I know it's going to be some time before we get back to any sense of new normal. So that is why I kind of want to encourage our community to advocate to our state and federal representatives because it's a critical need right now for funding and support, but not only for right now, but what lies ahead. And I think we really need that advocacy now for the future. But more importantly, the prospect of a snow day on Thursday is really on my mind. And I know we are super excited in our house because the class of 22, excuse me, the class of 2022 is running a virtual snowman competition. If you're not following them on Instagram, you should probably follow them soon. It's going to be awesome. You can upload your photograph of your snowman and send it to the kids, and they will judge your snowman. So just a word of warning, the LaTzias are going to bring our A-game to that.
Thank you, Kane. You know, I'd also like to just mention that I did have opportunity to attend our reopening committee meeting. And to just follow up on what Kane said, it's so important that we hear all of your opinions and all of your feedback. That is the forum, that is an excellent forum, you know, for us to talk about things and really move through processes and rationales for how we proceed during this very difficult time. Another part of important work that we, that I participated in was our district equity meeting. Again, very, very important work that we do to ensure that all of our students are treated the same and given the same opportunities. I'm very proud of this work. We have to have those honest conversations, not easy, but we do have to have them. And we will march forward and bring forth some really dynamic ideas and a policy so that we can ensure that we're moving all of our children forward and having everyone having the same equity to opportunity. Thank you.
I'll make a few comments. So, you know, life does move forward, and we move forward in the school district as evidenced by, you know, doing scholar athletes, by, you know, doing what we can to have athletics, by having meetings, our PTA. So I just want to mention that I attended a number of PTA meetings, Church Street, MAS, the high school, PTA Council, you know, special ed coffee talks. And while a lot of the subject matter is certainly related to, you know, the pandemic and our responses to it and how we can best help children and families, the work goes on. White Plains High School had its fall play, so I want to congratulate them on that. AI certification, it was an original play by one of our senior students, Max Kohn. So again, even amidst, you know, changing and different conditions, we're still able to, you know, produce a show in a different way, in a very creative way. I also attended a number of Westchester Putnam School Boards Association programs. They had a webinar the other night where the superintendent of Hastings, assistant superintendent of Mount Vernon, director of psychology at Scarsdale all presented. And I look forward to bringing back some of what they shared, especially to our board's subcommittees. And the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association also had a number of roundtables in the course of a week, a few weeks ago, and I was able to get to about eight of them. Again, topics that were very timely, meeting with school board members from all around the region. So it was really excellent to share ideas and hear what's happening in the other school districts. Thank you. You're muted.
You're muted, Rosemary.
I hear you. Now, Dr. Ricker, go over to you for our scholar athlete presentation.
Thank you, President Eller, and good evening, everybody. And thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. It is my pleasure to share with you our video. And thanks so much to Mr. Cameron, all the coaches and support staff who helped, who helped put this together. It is a short video, but it is a very important video as our student athletes did a great job this year during the fall. Challenges, of course, abound, but they worked through it, and we had a really great season. Certainly, we're very proud of them. And also not proud of, not just proud of their athletic prowess, but also, of course, their academic achievements as well. So without further ado, I will share.
I would like to thank Dr. Ricker and the Board of Education for the opportunity to recognize our student athletes and varsity teams that have achieved New York State Scholar-Athlete Awards this fall. Despite a fall season with so many unknowns, daily interruptions, and our typical school sports homework schedules altered in so many ways, our student athletes managed to achieve great success in the classroom this fall. Seventy-eight of our varsity athletes have been recognized as New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athletes. Five of our six varsity teams this fall have received New York State Public High School Athletic Association Team Scholar-Athlete Awards. Congratulations to our girls tennis team, field hockey team, girls soccer team, girls cross-country team, and boys cross-country team. Our boys soccer team came close with 10 players receiving the individual award. Before our coaches present the individual awards, I would like to thank our coaches for always prioritizing academics within their programs.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Tuck, and I'm the White Plains Girls Varsity Tennis Coach. This year, we had 15 girls on the team, and to say I'm proud of them for earning a Scholar-Athlete Team Award is an understatement. These girls showed up to practice every single day with a positive attitude, ready to play. They would already be warming up by the time I arrived at the courts. I heard no complaining of mask-wearing during practices or matches. Their resilience throughout the season to continue to compete and push themselves to be better during a global pandemic is something that should be applauded. Most of my girls would even stay at the courts late when I offered optional skill practice or stay late to hit with each other. They formed a team family within each other in such a sure season. They did all of this while earning high grades in school during a year with hybrid learning and so many challenges. Ten girls on the varsity team earned individual Scholar-Athlete Awards. I'm proud to read their names tonight. All three of my seniors earned this award. Victoria Jones, our captain, Samantha Martinez, and Chloe Tender. Our juniors, Abigail Suji and Assise Sani. Our sophomores, Natasha Rappa, Alyssa Kimble, and Amaleh Signer. Both of my freshmen earned this award, Ryan Crosskoff and Amber Lau. Thank you to the girls for an incredible and unforgettable season. And thank you to the White Plains Athletic Office for welcoming me onto the coaching staff and giving our team support throughout the season. A special thanks to Mr. Cameron for organizing the fall sports so our athletes could have a season. Jerry Dimes for her unwavering support in scheduling and rescheduling when weather was not on our side. Sandro Sensata and his team for preparing our courts for match day, and Jason and the security team for making our girls and families feel safe. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kalen Fitzsimons, Girls Cross Country Coach. Our overall team average for Scholar-Athlete was 95.18%. Our Scholar-Athletes are Simone Brady at 97.5%, Sophie Ginsburg, 100%, all A pluses, Brenna Hazen, 92%, Mia Luth, 98.5%, Yaslin Martinez, 99.2%, Fatima Orizaco Reyes, 97.7%, Gianna Priore, 90.2%, Mia Priore, 93.6%, Abigail Roman, 99.3%, Caroline Schick, 90%, and Rena Strangelini at 98.2%. The girls really dedicated themselves to their athletics and their academics. With everything going on this season, they took advantage of performing and studying every night. It's really hard to be a student athlete, and I'm very proud of them.
Hi, I'm Fred Singleton. I am the Boys Cross Country Coach. We're coming off a fine season where we were second in the league. It was an abbreviated season. We had about five meets this year as opposed to our 10 or 12 that we normally have. But we had a wonderful time. It was so good to see the young athletes, boys and girls, every day at practice doing the hard work. And it was tough doing it with masks on. And meanwhile, they were doing a great job in the classroom. Together, the entire group of 26 boys had an average of 93.23. A phenomenal season for them in the classroom as well. I'm going to read the people who had a 90 or above average, starting with freshman Matt Welling, Marcus Chung, the wonderful Joey DiMillo, who was one of our most improved athletes and also most improved in the classroom, Matt Masette, freshman Cassidy Cachetoria, Patrick Stanton, one of our captains, Marco Greco, Alex Gagnon, Abraham Casares. Our top athlete, our best runner this season, was Brian Mulvey, injured most of the year, but, you know, one of our bright stars for the future, Roland Staub. Our most improved athlete, in fact, one day in July, I came down to the school and I saw this young man running, and I said, he's going to have a good season, and that's Mr. Sean O'Donnell. Patrick Bulldog Brown, our top newcomer, Ellie Goldman. Another one of our sophomores who improved a great deal is Yuki Watanabe. Another freshman who had a good season, Emiliana Juarez. The always reliable junior, Ben Goldman. Another one of our top newcomers, Damian Kemner, who had a 99.44 average. Believe it or not, he had an A that brought his grade down. I wish I could have do that. And finally, another one of our top sophomores. He had a perfect 100 average, A pluses all across the board, Albert Mundanden. So ladies and gentlemen, we are all proud of these young men as Coach Kalen was proud of the young ladies. We're all one big team. And I want to thank you for your support in getting us through this pandemic and your support, parents, for getting these young athletes to school each and every day. And I want to thank the Athletic Director, Matt Cameron, and everybody in the office for making this season possible. Thank you very much.
White Plains Boys Soccer this season had an extremely successful season. The boys went undefeated in league play and secured the first league championship since the 2012 season. The boys went on to remain unbeaten until this year's regional finals, where we unfortunately lost to also undefeated Mamaroneck. The boys had 10 players who achieved New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete status, and those players are as follows. Chris Cardenas, Luis Zapata, Victor Flores, Carlos Mendez, Eric Antonekia, Eldon Merlich, Alberto Morales, Daniel Espinoza, Mario Martinez Jimenez, and Thomas Passapia. These gentlemen went the extra mile in a difficult situation of hybrid learning and coming to school every day for sports. They really put in the extra effort on the field and in the classroom, and I'm really proud of all of them for the hard work that they put in this season. Congratulations, guys, you did a great job.
I can honestly say that I have never been so proud of the White Plains Girls Varsity Soccer Team for so many reasons. Not only did you show up to every practice and game determined and focused and ready and eager to play, but then you would go home at night just as eager and focused to complete your schoolwork during a pandemic, right? So this season, we had an average of sometimes four games in a week, sometimes back-to-back, and you all still were so successful academically. So I'm so incredibly proud of you all. This is the second season in a row for us to make it to the second round of sectionals as a Scholar-Athlete team. Congratulations, girls. You deserve it more than any year before. The following players received a 90 or above as their quarter average during this fall season. Sophia Andrade, Lucy Barris, Juliana Bataglia, Tatiana Brown, Megan Dennis, Alexa Gallagani, Winnie Mann, Katie McAtier, Kim Morosko, Jade Palmer Johnson, Kristen Russo, Charlotte Savigny, Melissa Soto, and Julia Velazquez. Congratulations, girls.
Hi, everyone. I'm Coach Grant representing varsity field hockey. This is mine and Coach Barrio's fourth year coaching our girls. And this is the fourth year in a row that they have made Scholar-Athlete as a team, so congratulations. Despite having a short season, we were extremely successful, beating highly-ranked teams as well as playing in the quarterfinals of sectionals. So now I'll read the names of the individuals who received Scholar-Athlete. Gabby Abado, Olivia Alexander, Greta Brooks, Anna Chotrick, Alexa Donahoe, Sophia Emmert, Riley Falvey, Megan Furry, Sherlyn Garcia, Violet Hamlin, Julia Ricky, Marissa Thompson, Ava Weiner, and Jessica Zanda. So congratulations, girls. I can't wait for next year.
A big thank you to all of our parents and guardians for making this possible. Keeping up with your children's academic schedule on top of getting them to all their games and practices is a real commitment. So thank you. Congratulations to all of our Scholar-Athletes.
If I could offer on behalf of the board our most heartfelt congratulations to our students, our coaches, and parents and guardians. I think I heard one of the coaches said, this year more than ever. This is a very, very special accomplishment. We appreciate your grit and your determination. On behalf of the board, our most sincere congratulations.
Thank you, President Eller, and thank you, trustee, and everybody for celebrating and supporting our student athletes. And a particular thank you, of course, to our parents and guardians for always being in their corner and always being there for whatever they need. And then supporting, of course, our coaches and our support staff as well. A lot to celebrate, and we're really proud of you all. Thank you very much.
Dr. Ricker, did you want to, we'll go right into your report. Do you want to do the long-range plan now, or do you want to hold that?
Yeah, well, actually, if it's okay. First, I'd like to welcome our GO student liaisons are with us this evening. Welcome, Tigers, thanks for being here. I think Fiona's with us, I believe, and Senia, right? If I'm not mistaken. And feel free to unmute yourself. Hi, Senia, feel free to unmute yourself and share with us.
Hi, I'm Fiona Bradley. I'm the GO president along with Christopher Cardenas. And I'm just very thankful for everyone here, like parents, teachers, for always showing up and doing what's best for everybody's students. And even though it's a very difficult year, I'm going to speak on behalf of all the students that we appreciate everything everyone has done for us.
Hi, I'm Justenia. I'm the GO treasurer with Evelyn Torres. I am also very thankful for this year. We're all trying to make the best out of it. And I believe that with a smile, everything can be fine, and I love to smile, so.
Dr. Ricker, if okay, man, just go back to public participation and then back to your report.
Certainly.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if there'll be any public participation tonight? Please raise your hand as one of the participants.
We have Mrs. Norfleet.
Thank you. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person. We ask that you respect the privacy of students and staff. The administration will be happy to address matters of a more personal nature privately. Please, Mrs. Norfleet.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to extend a thanks. It feels like ages ago now, but in, on the month of November, White Plains PTA worked with White Plains City School District and Deb O'Garten, and we appreciate the collaboration. And we were able to bring a virtual presentation. And the presentation was about structuring remote learning at home for elementary and secondary students. So I just want to extend a thank you for the school districts. Some of the silver linings of COVID are being able to have these types of meetings and have large attendance, as we can see tonight at tonight's meeting. And we hope that PTAs can continue to work with the district to bring these really nice opportunities. And if anyone has any ideas or wishes, they could please reach out to White Plains PTA. Hopefully, we can work with the district to bring other presentations. And then, personal thanks, this is not my PTA voice, but I just want to thank the staff and the administration for following the science during COVID by keeping our schools open and only closing them when our students and staff are at risk and how we continue to look at the numbers and bring back students who really need to be in the classroom. So just I applaud all of you and keep up the great work. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Will there be any more public participation? Thank you so much, Gina. Dr. Ricker?
There was actually one more. I don't know if you saw my hand up.
I'm sorry, please go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. It's a big group to keep track of. Thank you, Ms. Eller. Valerie Villafane, Five Orchard Parkway. Son is on the other side of the desk, 11th grader in school. First of all, I want to acknowledge the teachers continuing, especially teaching live through the technology issues, which are improving slightly, and through COVID in the school and really being dedicated of bringing that live teaching. Very inspiring. Appreciate the teachers that are leveraging Wednesday, which is a little bit of an unusual day with short class periods and engaging the kids live. The crux to my question is around learning opportunities. So we've talked previously about Wednesday being basically a no-learning day with the short 20-minute periods. There's some teachers leveraging it for some social emotional support, which is greatly appreciated. And then on top of that, we have a fairly high absentee rate. We know that it's very challenging to get substitute teachers across the US when we benchmark with the New York State websites. It seems like White Plains is a bit more challenged than some of the other schools in Westchester. And so when we look at holistic, the learning opportunities are decreased across the board. And the question becomes, one, are we able to benchmark the policies in White Plains to be more friendly for teaching opportunities? Whether it's allowing teachers the opportunity to teach from their home where technology is oftentimes better than it is in school? Or flexibility on the policy to set substitute teachers up for success? So we have better opportunities on the percentage? Because I think we all want to keep people safe, and we want to see all of our students, regardless of the age, to be educated to the highest capability. Thank you.
Dr. Ricker, do you want to?
Sure. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Villafane. We are looking at ways that we can potentially work through some of the challenges associated with the need to work remotely from home. This is a pretty complex challenge. There are some, there are some legal aspects to this. There are certainly the aspects of being in the classroom with our children when they're in a classroom. But we are looking for ways in which to be able to support our faculty members and staff members in any way that we can. In terms of substitutes, we do have a pretty strong substitute pool, but dependent upon the situation, the availability of the substitutes has changed. We have some amazing building substitutes who are eager and willing to jump in at a moment's notice, and we're very appreciative for that. The day-to-day substitute pool was always a challenge, continues to remain a challenge. And certainly with a sizable portion of the pool having a larger concern, if you will, for being in public during the pandemic. Hopefully, that will begin to abate a bit. That's, it's a constant challenge that we're working on. So we will continue to keep you updated and keep the reopening committee updated as well as we're working through those challenges.
And is there a timeline on plans for Wednesday of restoring that half-day and basically a complete loss of learning to a full day of learning?
Well, I recognize and respect your characterization of the day as a complete loss of learning. I don't know that everybody would necessarily share that characterization, but I do, I do respect it. We are constantly looking at the schedule and how we're approaching in-person learning right now. As time, as time will permit and as the scenario and the landscape will permit, we will look to be able to bring more children back more often. I'm sorry, I don't have a hard and fast timeline for when the present schedule will adjust.
So now, Dr. Ricker, back to your report.
Certainly. Thanks again. And I just, I just wanted to thank our, our student representatives for taking the time to step in with us this evening. They're fantastic kids. If you haven't yet gotten a chance, please check out the Tiger Talks. They come out weekly, they're short, and they're super fun. Fiona, you've, you've all been doing a really great job. We are just so appreciative. You bring a smile to so many people's faces. Keep it up, keep those Tiger Talks coming and also those great activities, virtual as they are. I think it's a great idea to have a snow, a snow person building contest is super fun. Hopefully, you'll actually get the chance to do it. I don't know, we'll see if it snows or not. We'll see if it snows or not. But thanks so much, kids, for coming out this evening. It's also M A S night, I believe, here in the house. So let's hear for M A S. Great to have you. Hooray. Just always inspiring to see so many and I love that everybody smiles. It's just so great to see all of you. Thank you for coming and joining us this evening. So winter weather, what is going to happen? I'm already getting emails from folks trying to sway me one way or the other and a lake has not eaten well. I suppose we had a little bit of snow today, but no accumulation to be seen and already people are lobbying hard. I will tell you that we are in the process of finalizing our approach to how we are going to approach snow days this year. As you know, there is an opportunity, a pilot program being run through the New York State Department of Education that allows school districts to try different ways of the quote unquote traditional snow day. We're looking at that right now. We'll have information to share with our community tomorrow. Here's what I want to say. Snow days are important. There, I think they're a really fun time for kids. They're a great opportunity to get outside and to play. That's really important. That is not lost on us. We are, we are absolutely looking for an approach that will help us to achieve both a day of school, if you will, and also some time for our kiddos to get outside and enjoy themselves, build those snowmen, get into that that competition and get those pictures posted online as well. So more to come on that tomorrow. But listen, kids, take it easy on me on Twitter. It hasn't even come yet. Once the storm hits, you can, you know, you can be as rough as you want, but at least let it get you and not be a rainstorm. All right. So moving from snow days to micro clusters, Governor Cuomo was on today several times and we, we did not hear any updates related to the micro clusters around the state pertaining to us, which is great. That's great news. The calculations that are being utilized to figure out the micro clusters have changed a bit. They are looking at hospitalization rates and hospitalization capacity. The good news for us, we're still in, we're in good shape in our area. Yes, numbers are rising. Yes, there are more cases of COVID in our hospitals, but yes, we also have availability in our hospitals and people are really doing a great job. They're working really hard to try and keep those, those numbers down and to keep spread down. We are ready and we will be moving forward should we need to with the required testing that takes that needs to take place, should we be designated as a yellow, orange, or red zone. And just to, to help illustrate that process, I actually worked with Nurse Maggie and got the test myself and we made a video of it to be able to show our kids and to show our parents and guardians. It's super easy and since I know you all want to laugh, I'm going to let you be the first people to see it and then we'll push it out to everybody tomorrow. Hi, White Plains, this is Joseph Ricker, your superintendent of schools. And today we are going to get tested for COVID-19 using the By Next Now Rapid Test. I know a lot of you are wondering what testing looks like, what screening testing looks like. So we thought it would be great if we put together the short video so you can see that it's really no big deal. Let's go see Nurse Maggie.
Hi, Dr. Ricker, are you here and ready for your test?
Hi, Nurse Maggie, I sure am. I know this isn't going to be a big deal and I know how important it is to show our community members how quick and easy this By Next Now Rapid Test really is.
Everybody, I just want to show you, these are the rapid tests that the state gave us. It's called the By Next Now COVID-19 antigen test. In this kit, we have three things. We have the Q-tip swab that we use to swab Dr. Ricker's nose with. We have the cardboard cartridge that we're going to put the swab in and we have the reagent drops that actually if we put a couple of drops in and it starts activating the test. All right, so I'm going to take the swab and I'm going to open it up like this, just to take the swab out. Dr. Ricker, please put on your mask.
And so I'm just going to pull my mask right down really easy.
I'm going to go into one of his nostrils. I'm going in midway and I'm turning it one, two, three, four, five, pulling it out, going back to the second nostril, one, two, three, four, five. We're all done, Dr. Ricker. Thank you.
That was so easy. And you know what? Actually, it tickled. It didn't hurt at all.
That's it. It's a Q-tip swab. It's really soft. It's not like when you do the P C R that's very hard or, you know, I'm pointy. So it's very soft and you're only going to the mid of the nose. And now what I'm going to do is I'm going to add a couple of drops of the reagent fluid, only six drops on the top of the reagent fluid. So I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, six. That's it. Cover that up. And I'm going to now take the swab, I'm going to put it in and I'm going to make, I'm going to turn it three times. And then the most important thing that we're going to do is we're going to put Dr. Ricker's name on it so that I know that it's his test. And then I'm not going to confuse it with anybody else's. The other most important thing is I'm going to note the time that I did this test because it's only 15 minutes. So we're going to say 2:45. So at 3:00 P. M., we'll have his result. And that's how we test for the By Next Now COVID-19 antigen test.
There is no way we can leave you hanging. So in 15 minutes, we'll come back and let you know if I was positive or negative.
So guys, it's 3 o'clock. I did his test at 2:45 and so we're going to open up and see what his results are. So if you see, if there's one line, then he's negative. Dr. Ricker, you can go back to work now.
Thank you very much, Nurse Maggie.
You're welcome.
See, not a big deal. Definitely will help us in terms of screening all of, all of our students and faculty and staff who are in person. Thank you for those of you who have consented to participating in the testing process if we need to do it. For those of you who are now seeing how simple it is, you, you can always let us know that you will participate and we'll add you to the testing pool. Hope everybody stays safe, stays healthy and stays W P proud. Thanks, everybody. And that's it. Easy peasy. So hopefully that video will help folks see that if we do need to go down the road and we do need to conduct screening testing, we'll be able to do that without a problem. I do want to stop for a minute here because as we're talking about micro clusters and testing, I do want to welcome, we have a special guest this evening way back in March, started working with County Executive Latimer and the county as, as we were undertaking the COVID-19 pandemic. Since that time, George Latimer has met with all of the superintendents in our region every Monday morning, along with his team at the county. And we've been working in concert, working together to support each other, support each other's communities. And George, I want to thank you for taking the opportunity to come, not just to P T A meetings, but to all the Board of Education meetings in the region as well. I know you've had a busy night tonight, so I'm going to let you jump in right now. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you very much, Joe. Dr. Ricker, I appreciate the opportunity. And Madam President, it's good to see you again and see so many other friends here on the Zoom. I know you have a long meeting, so I don't intend to take a lot of time up. But as Joe said, I had, I had the opportunity to meet with various school superintendents back at the education house on Homestead Lane in March. And there was frustration amongst the school districts that they were being thrust into a situation without sufficient help. And while decisions were being made, they didn't have a sufficient seat at the table. And that includes school boards as well as school superintendents and the other, you know, the other folks in the game, the administration, the teachers and through their bargaining units and so forth. So while the county government has no direct authority over school districts, we have some tangential responsibilities, whether it's our public bus system or as we're seeing in this case, our public health system. Having served in the state senate representing White Plains along with Andre Stewart Cousins for a number of years before Shelley Mayor, I knew that, that the county had to become engaged to try to become a part into the various school districts through the best of our ability. We don't get to make some of the executive decisions, but over the course of these 10 months, we've worked with your school district and others to try to work through what's come out of Albany and try to determine how we can administer as effectively as possible the things that have been put at us. Just as I saw Joe do the video just a second ago, which outlines the testing process, our county health department stepped up to do some webinars to help deal with how to sanitize school buildings or how to deal with some of the testing availabilities to help the education process for the people that are responsible for doing this in a school district. We've, we've lobbied the governor and the people around the governor on a lot of these issues. Thankfully, White Plains is not in one of the color coded zones at this point in time. But, you know, we've tried to be as aggressive as we can with state officials to really help them understand, you know, what has to be done. And we've talked as well about some of the testing components that the state mandates now under orange and red categories, should we get to those categories and that the county will directly be involved with the school districts and trying to accomplish the testing that we're being asked to do. All of this is the same position that you're all in. This is uncharted water. There's nothing that a school administrator, a school board member, a teacher, a parent of a school student could imagine would happen when the pandemic came. None of us in our adult lifetime have a, have a experience to draw off of. So we figure it out as we go along and we try to make rational decisions. And if we, we see to be going down the wrong road, we stop and we pivot, we turn, we go in a different direction. We try to get best practices from other places. With that kind of pragmatism, we've worked to this point fairly closely. We know that with the coming of the vaccine, there are more questions than are answers. We are trying to get some clarification on how vaccine distribution is going to happen. We have an idea of the parameters of who's going to get it first and how it's going to play down the line, but we don't necessarily know the conduits yet. We believe the state is going to work through hospitals for vaccines for the various healthcare workers and they may be working through pharmacies in order to liaison with nursing homes. And then in the priority of things, when we get to healthy adults and healthy kids, the general population to inoculate them is yet ahead of us. And that may take a while, but at least, you know, we want to try to get a plan from the state and then we all look at it, we all try to work through it and we evaluate it, try to make the best possible decisions we can. In terms of the testing, we're working directly with the state. The state's made a commitment to us that they will provide the necessary testing if this district or any district goes into that mode of having to test 10% or 15% of your population every, every 15 days, which is a pretty aggressive goal at hand. I would also say, without dragging this out too much, the governor, the people around him seem to be moving away from looking at the rate of infection as the key metric and moving more toward hospitalizations and availability of hospital services as the dynamic as to whether or not a crisis exists. And that, of course, is more helpful to us because in Westchester County in general, we have about 2,400 hospital beds. Right now, we're looking at 360 or so people that are hospitalized being treated with COVID. Now, there are other people with other illnesses in many of those hospital beds, but if we needed to clear the deck of elective surgery in order to accommodate just COVID patients, then we would have that capacity. And then, of course, as you well know, you've seen the tents in front of the county center in that section of White Plains on the Greenberg border, and that is 110 unit field hospital that has lay fallow. I mean, it's filled, but it's filled with equipment and the readiness to help people if we do get to the point where our health system is overtaxed, which it is right now in Western North Dakota and South Texas and other parts of the country, but not yet here. The most important reason for me to visit, and I do want to mention two other things after I make the statement, is, is to let you know personally that you are not alone in having to reach these goals. The county government has determined that we have to be a partner. We will figure out how to do things that seem impossible at present and not that we have the answers, but we will work with you to try to get those answers so that you can deliver the education product that you do very well in White Plains. I know that from my past years of representing White Plains, both in the county legislature and the state senate. I want to thank you for letting me be on this Zoom because I had a chance to reconnect visually with Fred Singleton. Fred and I were high school graduates together, Mount Vernon High School, class of 1970. We just did our 50th anniversary together, but because of the pandemic, we're going to do it right there in White Plains at the Crown Plaza. Because of the pandemic, we had to bump it off, but we figured since we lived 50 years, we could live 51 years and hopefully sometime in '21, Fred and I and all of our classmates will get together and the governor won't be watching and we'll hug each other and, and we'll show the emotion of all these years. But Fred's been a good friend and, and he's done a great job for your district as well. And I also wanted to make sure that we recognize James Dean, who's on this call. I have made it a practice, applaud James, I made it a practice to visit some of the PTAs and I've seen many of you there, Cheryl was at one of the ones or two of the ones I was at. Gina's heard the speech, I think, twice already. So Gina, I'll try to see if I can change the words a little bit, but in recognition for what James has done in his capacity, I have a lovely certificate framed, which will be dropped off, James, at your house or wherever is best to get it to you. But it's important for you to know that when people step up in the district or through the parents, through the P T A, that other people see, we notice and we know that that affects the quality of your education. My daughter has long since graduated schools and she was here in the Ride District. I grew up, as I've said, in Mount Vernon and the education that each of us had in our own generation is what helped us make our lives. And you're doing that right now in this, in this community. And, and White Plains is not a tiny community. It's a big community. You've got a lot of kids in the district, but you've done a great job and we can help you do that job going forward, we will. So I appreciate you, Madam President and Mr. Doctor Superintendent, for letting me jump in. If you'd like me to try to answer any questions, I'm happy to do that. If you want to pull the invisible hook out, that's understood, understandable. You can do that, too. But it's a pleasure to be with you for a few minutes and thank you for giving me this chance.
Well, County Executive, thank you so much. And, you know, this really has been a great partnership. I feel like we're very blessed to have colleagues all throughout the region to be able to pull together and lean on. And what a lot of folks don't realize is way back in March, when we spent the entire weekend working on how we were going to approach schools during this oncoming pandemic at the time, when you made the declaration on the 16th of March, I believe it was, to close schools, that had come after a full weekend of speaking back and forth with Albany and letting them know where we were, what we were seeing, what our concerns were. And what a lot of folks, I think, don't realize is that the governor made his executive order that exact day that you were, you were putting yours out. So, George, I know how hard you've been working behind the scenes and in front. And just so you know, we are, we're appreciative of the partnership and we know that we're going to be able to push through this. And just you and the entire team at the county, you have our thanks.
Thank you very much, Joe. A pleasure.
See you Monday.
See you Monday on the phone. Madam President, thank you for the courtesy of visiting and at some point in time, when all of this lifts, we'll see each other in person, perhaps toast to our survival and our progress.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a very good evening.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
On the agenda this evening, we also have a resolution 9B. Cheryl and I were talking about this a little bit this morning. Thank you, Cheryl. This is again, a resolution that folks will be able to view and see that the district is pushing forward to make sure that we are receiving the support that we need, whether it be from the federal or the state level, to conduct all of these steps that, that we need to take to keep our children and our faculty and staff members and entire educational community safe during the pandemic. So that's item 9B. I also want to draw attention to, and I know you will as well, President Eller, but Nurse Maggie has been a truly a monolithic force for good during, during this, this challenge. And I just can't say enough about Maggie and just always being there. And it doesn't matter, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't matter if it's a weekday or a weekend or in the middle of the night or early in the morning. Maggie Resiopho has been phenomenal professional and it just, we are, we're really privileged to have her as part of our team and that she stepped up to be our COVID coordinator, which is a really a 24/7 job. So thank you, Maggie, for that and, and for everything that you're going to be doing as, as we move forward. And with that, I do have our long range plan presentation that I'd like to share with you right now. Does anybody have any questions that aren't related to the long range plan or anything else?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to follow on. Yes, we are very appreciative of, of Nurse Maggie. I will just add to your comments that I, I can attest to the time that she takes with staff and guardians and parents alike. I've heard parents come back to me after speaking with her for 30 minutes. Where she got that 30 minutes, I don't know, but she consistently takes the time to talk to people and to explain things so that they're comfortable and that is deeply appreciated as well.
Thank you, President Eller. Okay, I'm going to share my screen with you now. We have a short presentation. Shorter, shorter than. Shorter, um, shorter than it was. It is a, an 84, uh, an 80, well, 83, 84 slide presentation that folks, uh, can absolutely view, uh, at their leisure. It'll be on the district's, uh, every, all about the budget website. Um, this is a, a bit of an abridged, a bit of an abbreviated version. And, uh, I can promise you that I'm absolutely not going to read slides to you. I'm going to, uh, to, to talk you through this and, um, at the end, certainly trustees, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, answer them. First thing I'd like to say is thank everybody who participated this year in putting together our long-range plan update for the school year 2020, 2021 through 2024, 2025. Now, of course, this is an undertaking, um, that, that is annual, um, but it, it's, it's always prospective, always thinking about not just this year, uh, but years down, down the road as well. So thank you to everybody for participating in that process. Uh, as with everything, the long-range plan is absolutely predicated in the foundation of our district and our vision, mission and core beliefs and our strategic plan. So this year's strategic plan, of course, was a bit different as we, uh, are in a pandemic and we needed to make sure that we adjusted our strategic initiatives to address, um, the, the very new, very novel, um, challenges that, that, uh, we found ourselves having to deal with on a daily basis, um, during the pandemic. So of course, related to, um, asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities, hybrid learning and, and making sure that our children have all of the social and emotional supports, as many as we can possibly give to them every day, um, as well as the collaboration and the need to make sure our community is kept up to date and informed with as much information as we have at any given time. There, there is a lot, um, and I, I don't need to describe the stress and the challenges that folks are feeling every day. Uh, but everything from the economic uncertainty, um, the, the, uh, the lack of a, a subsequent federal stimulus, which we, we continue to hear about, um, civil unrest throughout the, the country, food insecurity, educational insecurity and uncertainty, um, ongoing trauma, all of these, all of these concerns, um, are, are with us every day. And, uh, we have to make sure that we're, we're to the best of our ability attending to those, um, as we, as we conduct schooling. Um, in New York, we know that without federal stimulus, we are going to have a shortfall in our budget. Right now, they're projecting about 13.4 billion, uh, in terms of a decline, uh, for 2020, 2021. Um, this is a, this is a major issue for the entire state. Indeed, uh, all, all of the states in the nation are experiencing similar, um, fiscal, uh, crises, uh, crises that, that need, uh, support from, from federal intervention. We're hopeful that we will see that coming. Uh, but as of now, we've not. Uh, the school districts have incurred millions of dollars in costs to, to reimagine and reopen schools, um, during the pandemic, making sure that we're, we're creating public spaces that are as safe as they possibly can be. Um, and making sure that we're following all the required New York State Health Department, um, guidelines as well. We only got a little bit of money from the CARES Act and it was for, for one year. Um, we're not getting full reimbursement from FEMA, uh, for PPE during, during the closure that we experienced. And, and of course, uh, the, as we move forward into the reopening. And, um, we, we also know that, uh, the, the, the Department of Budget, uh, has additional concerns uh, as we move into, uh, the, the remainder of this year and then into the, the new year. Um, and, and these are all issues that we're going to have to contend with, of course, as a school district. In terms of our, our own district, um, we, we had the so-called pandemic adjustment, which really was the infusion of $1.6 million, um, and from the CARES Act, but then, uh, you know, taking out $1.6 million. So it was almost like here's additional money for your pandemic adjustment, uh, but we're going to withhold $1.6 million from state support, uh, as an offset. Uh, we, we know that we could potentially be looking at a 20% reduction in state aid moving forward, which is real money, right? About $5 million for our district. Um, the, the, uh, extended, expended and loss of revenue of 3.5 million, uh, plus due to, uh, to the COVID and CARES to fund only 1.6 million. Again, major challenges, um, associated with the revenues coming in compared to the expenditures having to deal with, um, and, and address the district, uh, related to the pandemic. We did though, uh, take a very solid and conservative approach, right? Way back in the spring. Um, the district held, uh, from moving forward with any of the 2020, 2021 non-mandated positions and services. So we didn't make those purchases. Um, we held off on those. You remember us talking about that back in the spring and in the summer, and that was smart, uh, because it ended up so that we didn't overextend ourselves and put ourselves in a position where we might have to be cutting the instructional core moving forward. And that's our guiding principle, protecting the instructional core. So all of the supports and services, all of the programming, the extracurricular activities, the athletic opportunities, everything that our children have available to them now, we want to preserve that moving forward. We're always looking at evaluating, right? Needs versus wants as we're talking about budgeting. Um, we're making sure that we're trying to, uh, preserve all, all of the investments that we've already made as well as, uh, you know, trying to reduce costs or prevent additional costs if we can, finding efficiencies within our, our program that we presently have and reallocating what we find to be able to support new and innovative opportunities for our children. And, and always trying to make, uh, changes rather than eliminating. These are the principles that we've, we've taken as we've approached this process, both in the past and this year. Looking at the financial landscape and our revenue assumptions, and I'll ask Dr. Vikarat Tej to feel free to jump in, just in case I miss anything here. Um, but here, the bottom line is we need to make, um, some, some key assumptions related to, um, our, our tax levy. We know, um, that this year we're going to be under a 2% tax levy. We're talking right now with the, the finance committee and, and then later with the full Board of Education on the approach that we're, we're going to be taking in this year's proposed budget. We're very, very conscious that our community, um, has, has undergone and continues to undergo fiscal, uh, stress. And we want to do everything we possibly can to minimize that or reduce that in any way we're able. And so we're going to be looking at, at a, a proposed budget this year that keeps that in mind as we keep our guiding principles in mind, um, in, in terms of preserving our instructional core. In terms of taking a look at, uh, our, our proactive responses, so I'll bring you down, um, to, to what the district did. Uh, again, debt service reserve funds are, 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 are being used to reduce the capital tax levy and a reduction in the, in the projected budget for 2021, 22, due to the hold or elimination of, of those initiatives in our current year. We can strip them out, uh, and, and support a reduction in the overall budget if needed, um, without impact negatively impacting the instructional program. Those are good things. Certainly we want to be able to move forward with the plan that we had in place prior to the pandemic, but that'll come later. What we need to do right now is focus on, again, those principles, making sure that we're preserving our instructional core, making sure that we're keeping, um, our, our budget, our budgeting as conservative as possible with respect for our taxpayers, while at the same time continuing to advocate for more, um, state aid, more of White Plains' tax dollars to be returned to White Plains to support our children, um, in our community. Whoops, I'm so sorry. Here, uh, just again, this, this slide is just giving you a look over, over the years, projecting us out from prior year tax levy um, to future tax levies and where we think that, where we think we will be. There are other revenue assumptions, again, state aid, I, I've talked about this a little bit. Local resources in terms of, um, interest earnings and the like, probably flat and current budget levels. And it's probable that there will be additional revenues in subsequent years. Um, but we're going to continue to take in a, a conservative view because it's just, we're, we're just not confident right at the moment enough, um, to, to, uh, to put, to put down that we're going to see those, those increases come to fruition. We always take a look each year, um, we, we do a demographic study and we always take a look at where we are in terms of our student, uh, our student population, our, our, uh, our actual attendance. And, uh, what you'll see this year is we actually have a, a bit of a reduction, um, compared to what we projected, where we would be, um, to where we are right now. And again, in a typical year, this changes pretty regularly. People move out, people move in. Um, right now, we're looking at about a 2% reduction or a 2% drop in our enrollment, which really translates to about 120 students. Um, again, we'll have better, uh, we'll have more solid nut figures, um, when we get the new, uh, report toward the end of December, early January, and we'll be able to share them with everybody. Thinking about our expenditures. And, and this is not, uh, you know, this is not new information for anybody. Employee benefits, um, this is, uh, a, a, a large area that we have to continue to keep an eye on in terms of our, uh, teachers' retirement system contributions. They're projected to increase about 10% or to, to, I'm sorry, to about 10% from about 9.53. Um, employee retirement system, the, the contribution rate for 21, 22, um, we're thinking it's going to increase to 16.2% from about 14.6. Um, and then health insurance, uh, the, the rate will increase by about 4% for 21, 22. Um, and we, we've seen that, um, in, in subsequent years, it's probably going to be a similar rate of increase. Our tax certs, we always, again, the district, uh, makes sure that it maintains, uh, its own reserves to be able to, uh, handle tax, uh, certiorari refunds. We don't have to borrow to do it, which is fantastic. Um, and we're making sure that we're, we're keeping those, um, those, the, those, uh, reserves appropriately, uh, appropriately stuck to be able to handle, um, what would come through. On an average annually, it's about $5 million. Um, so for 20, uh, 2020, 2021, 4.1 million has been estimated right now. Our tax, uh, cert liability, um, is expected to grow to about 63 million, uh, due to the economic decline. And so we're, we're keeping a very close eye on that as well. Debt service, our annual payments are about 9.8 million, um, in principal and interest. And, uh, debt service reserve funds are used to offset the cost of, uh, the annual, um, debt service for about 2, 2.1 million through 2024, 2025. We have other contractual expenses, uh, such as, um, BOSI's costs, property insurance, utilities, transportation, et cetera. Um, we think probably about an annual increase of 2%, um, uh, will be coming forward in the next fiscal year. In terms of operations, um, we are, uh, we are right now thinking, uh, for, for 20, I'm sorry, 2021 or 2020 to 2021, we, you have, you have that there for 2021 to 2022. Um, we're, we're thinking that they're gonna, uh, we're gonna try and maintain and we're gonna try and keep as close as we possibly can. Um, we are looking forward in terms of revenues being held flat and a potential loss of state aid. Um, we are, we, we have to continue to make sure that we're accounting for expenses or increases in salaries and benefits and other contractual obligations. We have to continue to look to find efficiencies again, while preserving the instructional core. And hopefully be able to advocate for state aid support to at least return to what it was pre-pandemic. Um, for 2021, our budget parameters, um, we're going to be utilizing the projections that we have. Um, we're going to be, uh, allocating on a per, per building basis in terms of research, resources. And, uh, no new initiatives are going to be put forward without a corresponding decrease, um, or a reallocation in resources. Thinking about our schools. Lots of course, I don't need to explain, have gone into the health and safety protocols in every facility all throughout the district, whether it be the PPE or whether it be the, um, the reduction in density, hand washing, hand sanitizer everywhere, temperature checks, um, all throughout the, the, the buildings. All, all of these have costs and all of these protocols have been put into place, um, and are, are moving forward in every single facility all throughout the district. I do want to thank all of our principals. Uh, right now, we're going to start with elementary. Um, but I'd like to thank everybody, the, the principals, the assistant principals, the coordinators and the directors, uh, for all their hard work and coming together and put together this, uh, this long-range plan. Thinking about elementary, uh, hybrid instructional model, you, you know, we are utilizing, um, uh, various platforms to be able to engage in hybrid and remote instruction technology. All of our children, and this is a point of pride, have access to one-to-one iPads, internet access, as well as the opportunities for professional development. Schedules do change depending upon what we're facing on a daily basis. And as we were discussing earlier, we want to be able to bring more children back into the facilities as soon as possible. That's always been the goal of the reopening committee, continues to remain the goal. And, uh, as, as we're able to do that, we, we absolutely will. Every child in the elementary schools has at-home resources. Again, another point of pride here in White Plains, to be able to provide all of our kids with what they would need at home as well as in school. Virtual support programs are available to our children and we did a lot of summer curriculum work. And kudos to all of our professional staff members who participated in that to make sure that we were ready to move forward in September. Social emotional learning, I don't think we can say enough about the importance of social and emotional support during this time, not just for our children, but also for all of our educational community members. We're focusing on emotional wellbeing in all of our buildings. We have SCL committees at each of our schools, mindfulness and trauma-informed, uh, educational approaches all throughout, um, our, our buildings, as well as community meetings and other fun things to participate in, uh, to support our children and our staff. And adult self-care has been, uh, uh, again, a very important part of what we've been working toward to make sure that all of, all of our community members, including our adults, are taking good care of themselves so that they can take good care of our children. Special education, we saw the expansion of integrated co-teaching, ongoing implementation of inclusive practices as well as special opportunities for, for target, uh, targeted students and support. Dual language, again, uh, doing a lot, um, to support and to strengthen the structure of the 50-50 model, um, in K to five. We have instructional materials in English and in Spanish. We expanded the, the program to Church Street and continue to expand, um, in the building, continuing to work on biliteracy strategies, um, to develop in both languages, which of course is even more challenging now, um, due, due to the pandemic, but we're still working, we're still pushing forward. Um, parent workshops, opportunities for parents to engage in workshops with our instructors, uh, as, uh, is, is, uh, great and has really, um, has, has been a great opportunity for our parents and guardians. And of course, professional learning opportunities. We are continuing with our program evaluation in the spirit of continuous improvement, looking at dual language, looking at mathematics. We're reviewing, um, social studies and writing, social emotional learning throughout the district as well as, and this is something that I'm proud of, and I know, um, some of our, uh, some of our parents and guardians and, and instructors on, on this, uh, this evening's meeting are proud of, the work that we've done, uh, for recess and making sure that we're supporting our recess monitors and all of those adults who engage with our children during that free time, um, to provide for a more structured and, um, a, a rich experience for our kids. And, you know, moving into middle school and thanks to Mr. Spatafor and Dr. Rodriguez, as well as their teams for help, of course. Again, use of learning management systems, all of our children have access to what they need to be able to engage in both hybrid and remote learning at home. Um, technology has been rolled out and continues to be rolled out all throughout, um, the grade levels. Here you can see, um, our children engaging in class. The hybrid instructional model, um, you know, we really, this is something that, that, again, credit to our faculty, staff and administrators. They, we developed it, you know, um, from nothing. And, uh, and of course, it continues to, to be improved upon. Um, and you know, it's not optimal, uh, but at the same time, so much, so much different than where we were in the spring and in the summer months, and, and we are proud of that. Uh, virtual support programs, again, for our children who need that extra help are available. And there's our kiddos in the hallway. At the element, uh, at the middle school level, developmental designs continues to be part of our social and emotional learning, um, approach. We're fostering those relations, those positive relationships among students and staff with a mentoring program. Um, we have, for instance, uh, the Just Mercy, uh, Community Read took place, which was phenomenal. And, uh, and, and, uh, you know, just, uh, from everybody who participated, said it was just a great capstone. Um, and of course, Social Justice Week 2020 was fantastic. Um, that, that's going to continue to, to, to grow and we're going to continue to build, um, those successes in our social and emotional work. Tiger Hangouts, which are being done virtually, are opportunities for our students to be able to connect in a more unstructured environment. Um, and, and just have a conversation and, and catch up and those types of things, uh, as well as advisory opportunities for our kids. In curriculum instruction, more work in terms of what we did in the summer to prepare, um, integration of social emotional learning opportunities into the, the academic curriculum and specifically the English Language Arts curriculum. Uh, we had our, our Shakespeare Festival. We had our Shakespeare festival. We, we had a young, young authors colloquium. Avid continues on district-wide writing review committee. We are expanding offerings in, in our reading classes, as well as clarifying ways in which students are, are placed in those classes. Digital resources were developed six through 12. And again, looking at that curriculum work that took place and you just, you, you have to think about this for, for what it is. I think Dr. Hand said over somewhere over 500 professional development opportunities took place between the spring and where we found ourselves beginning in the opening of the academic year in September. We increased the, the number of sections of advanced math. We continue to offer double accelerated math. We access to common assessments and technology integration using multimedia and other engaging, and other engaging ways to keep kids engaged in, in that process. Couple of more pictures, see a science lab and, and band practice outside. In terms of the arts, again, looking, looking to provide those enrichment opportunities. Digital art apps are being used, websites are being used, teachers are doing a tremendous job in the special areas of providing access and opportunity to our children. In terms of band purchasing instruments so that students didn't have to share instruments or accessories and making sure that everybody has the access to the digital platforms that they need so that they can access them at any time, whether they're at home or whether they're in school or whether they're somewhere else entirely. Social studies, the implementation and review of the, of, of the total social studies programs underway. We are going to be also having conversations with PNW about facing history in ourselves and generation citizen and other ways to, to again bolster our social studies programming and make the social studies experience germane to our children and make sure that we're bringing, continuing to bring in real life opportunities for them to explore the social studies in topics that are, you know, based in what's, what's happening right now in our world and, and in our communities. In terms of special education, we've dedicated progress monitoring. We've restructured the consultant teacher programs. We have common planning time now for special education and general education teachers, expansion of the integrated co-teaching cohorts. And we're in year two of the ISP program and again, use, use of technology and accommodations for all of our children. In terms of languages other than English, ENL back to school support. We had a virtual summer program for English language learners, which was fantastic. We had summer curriculum projects and the dual language program continuing to work and, and strengthen our approaches all throughout that program. Moving on to secondary and the high school in Rochambeau. And thanks to Mr. Martinez and Mr. Bratcher and their teams for, for their help and their support here. Social emotional approaches are again, just as important at the upper grade level as they are at the elementary grade level. And making sure that we have opportunities for our children to engage. So everything from advisory to school-based support groups and, and Andrew's support for, for our students as well as staff members. In terms of special education, the continuum of service program review and a year or two of ISP therapeutic program review. In curriculum instruction for mathematics, digital resources for all grade levels, seven through 12. Summer curriculum work as well here, continued multivariate calculus, Calc III in partnership with Marist. And I know that that's a, a, a class that many of our students work very, very hard in. Technology integration as well in mathematics. Science and technology, again, summer curriculum elective courses in, in science and engineering. New digital textbooks for living environment, courses at both, at both at the high school and at Rochambeau. And take home kits for our children to engage in engineering design, industrial design as well. Give you a sense in terms of English language arts and social studies at the high school level. And again, you can see similar opportunities for our children. Just looking for all, all the most engaging ways that we can provide opportunities for kids to get involved with those subject areas. Everything from the Shakespeare festival to making sure we're creating real life learning opportunities for our students in social studies by introducing new classes. So for instance, we, we introduced Action Civics, Latin America and Latinx Studies, Super US History and Criminal Justice, which is a dual enrollment course. Physical education is, is, is more about making sure that we're teaching good and healthy habits for our students and less about, you know, jumping jacks and, and pushups and really making sure that, that we're hopefully imparting on our children a, a healthy way of life that'll be sustainable for many years to come, not just while they're in school. And, and language other than English and ENL, again, bolstering the SEAL of Biliteracy program. And we're very, very proud of all of our students who come through and earn the New York State SEAL of Biliteracy 50 or earned it already, six of the 50 earned it in two languages. Thirty-three of those were either English language learners or former English language learners. And 14 of the 50 were part of the first K through 12 cohort of dual language students. American Sign Language is in its third year at the high school, a very popular course and a great opportunity for students to participate in a different type of, of language. And fine arts, again, take home art, art kits for our children to be able to participate in studio art classes even from home. Digital art apps, music technology, MacLab program was installed at Rochambeau. Take home keyboards for our children in piano class and guitars in guitar class. So really just, you know, very proud of having the opportunity and very grateful for the support to have the opportunity to be able to give our children exactly what they need to participate in all of these classes, whether they're full remote or whether they're hybrid. Thinking about athletics and of course, we recognized our student athletes this evening. We are so proud of our Tigers, we're so proud of every one of our teams. We will be back, the sports that got put off or postponed so far this year, the so-called high, high risk or high impact sports such as football and wrestling and basketball. We know that we will be back and, and we're, we're really grateful for all of our students, all of our coach support staff who have, who've been working with our children and doing their very best even during the pandemic. We made some enhancements this year. We have transportation that's taking our children and bring from, from, from home and bringing them to school so that they're able to participate in athletics and those are, those are, including children who are full remote. So they've made the decision to, to take advantage of, of the full remote platform, but they can still participate in sports. Thinking about long-range plan in terms of operations. We have a ton of work that's always going throughout the district. And it just, just kind of gives you a sense of the number of, of work orders that get put in at, at any given time. And, and I do have to take a moment just to celebrate and thank Frank Stefanelle and all of the members of our facilities, maintenance and custodial teams. They have done a tremendous job, not just in the regular day-to-day of taking care of our facilities and our grounds, but making sure that we were ready to reopen in a safe manner for all of our children and educational community members in September. A very short amount of time, I mean, think about it, installing over 700 hand sanitizer dispensers and making sure that those dispensers are getting refilled, disinfecting all of our equipment, disinfecting all of our classrooms and learning spaces, making sure all of those thermal kiosks were installed and ready to, to be operational, just a ton of work. And thanks to Frank and all of the members of, of our team for making that happen. Give you a sense of some of our priority goals. We had to sort of put the master plan off to the side for a moment as we handle the, the pandemic. We are hoping and expecting to resume those talks in 2021. The master planning committee did a great, a, a great amount of work over the course of last year. And we were just about ready to present it to the Board of Education when the pandemic hit in March of 2020. Succession planning went through and, and we were happy to welcome Xavier Hernandez in terms of, of our, our Assistant Director of Facilities. We have our facilities and custodial assessment that's being drafted right now. We made some pretty significant and will continue to make significant ventilation improvements. And as you know, we are very fortunate and grateful to have received grants, one from ConEd, one from DASNY with a great amount of support from Assemblyman Buckwald, which will continue to again, make our facilities, particularly in this instance, the high school, really bring it up, up to speed and make sure that, that we have all of the HVC needs that our children need, including air conditioning. Green initiatives continue to move forward, solar lighting. We're taking advantage of as many opportunities as we possibly can to get those incentives as we move forward. Terms of our capital plan, and I'm not going to read through all these, you can read this at your convenience, but you see the amount of work that has been going on and is going all throughout the district. And you see at, at the bottom, I made mention of that DASNY grant for 2.7 million. Another group, another tremendous group and part of our team is our, our safety and security team. And thanks to Sean Lewis and all of our security professionals, as well as our SROs for making sure that our buildings are safe and always being there as a resource for us at all times, whether it be helping, helping our students, whether it be helping folks who are coming in on a daily basis, or just making sure that our events are, are, are all under control and everybody is safe and secure. We're really fortunate and grateful. Information technology, you know, it goes without saying, there was a ton of work that got put into the information technology side of the district. This year, of course, we had a leg up in that we had one-to-one device initiatives already started throughout the district. So kudos to the Board of Education, Technology Department and the district for already had making those steps. And then we were able to, to come forward and roll it out with all of our children. Zoom licenses, Remind licenses, Wi-Fi accounts, all of the different things from a technology standpoint, a technology infrastructure standpoint that we had to put into place to get us ready to operate this year and all of the training that goes along with it. So thanks to Mr. Velez and our, and our technology and, and information team for being able to, to move that forward and, and working with the reopening committee again, right from the get-go, right from the beginning in March and April. Thinking forward in terms of technology, we are moving away from the whiteboards and, and projectors and moving toward interactive TVs with webcams, a much better bang for your buck. And, and absolutely, I actually think much more user-friendly as well. Changing out some network switches and, and switching over to voice-over IP. Transportation, lots going into transportation. We're fortunate that we have a very close working relationship with National Express. Of course, you know, we had to make sure that all of the health, safety aspects of transportation were in place. So everything from mandatory screenings, communication, making sure that our buses are being disinfected and that they're well ventilated and that everybody has the PPE that they need to, to run our buses and our bus routes safely each day. We are collecting ridership data as, as always. We're maintaining distancing on our buses and adjusting routes whenever we need to. And we really do try to be as helpful as possible with parents and guardians and children in terms of whatever we, we can do to support them and their transportation needs. Using Zonar this year, which is helping us to verify all of our ridership and making sure that all of the students who are on our buses are getting on the right buses each day. In terms of food services, again, Ed Mara and the team were with us every single day, even from the outset of the pandemic, making sure that there was food available to our children and our families. And we're appreciative of that. I feel like it's, it's been ongoing every single day. And they're doing everything that they possibly can. That's going to continue as we, as we move forward into the academic year. We know that the, the participation in foods, in, in food service has declined significantly because we have fewer students in the building every day. And we, we have to try and, and look at ways to realize efficiencies so that the program isn't negatively impacted. But the good news is that the federal government has extended the, the opportunity to, for food for all of our children through the year. So we're, we're happy about that. We're also conducting a program evaluation on our food services to make sure that we're maintaining that spirit of continuous improvement in all aspects of the district and, and food service is one of those areas. Anne, did you want to talk just a little bit about purchasing and records?
Sure, Dr. Rika. So purchasing, we continue to find ways to, to find efficiencies. We established an Amazon business account and procedures for being able to do online ordering. We instituted a new asset management program with Capital Region BOSI's to track all our, our assets and to do physical inventories each year and provide the necessary reports for financial insurance purposes. And then our records management, you know, it really, COVID has really pushed us to take on a huge initiative that we were doing every year, but now we're doing it in earnest to really purge and digitize and make sure that we have those interactive inactive files set up in a records management secure room. We continue to look for grants from New York State. So really trying to move towards that paperless environment and make us self-sufficient if we are remote.
Thanks, Anne. Again, with, when you think about health services, it has become a much, much bigger part of the, well, listen, hold on. I'm sorry. School nurses are a huge part of, of any school day and everybody, everybody knows that, whether it be a scraped knee, upset tummy or, you know, a, a significant illness, huge part of the day. But if you can imagine, even bigger now. Everything from health screenings to making sure that the contact tracing is taking place appropriately. We have new substitute nurses and health aides to help us and help our, our health services team. We know that COVID testing is likely in the future, we're just not sure when yet. All of the data that needs to be collected and uploaded on a daily basis to the New York State dashboard. It is a, it's a big job, it's a Herculean task and they're really doing a, a fantastic job of fulfilling all of those responsibilities and keeping our community members safe. Go ahead, Anne.
So a huge thank you to the business office and keeping the trains running on time, you know, making sure, you know, operations, no matter what going on, whether we're, we're remote or not, is taking place. And that push towards a paperless environment in both payroll accounts payable and accounting. They've really been forging ahead to, to make that all a reality. We're doing, you know, more payments by wire. We've been working with the HR department on Families of First Response Act. And just, you know, that continual effort to find efficiencies, to ensure that we're making sure internal controls are tight, cross-training staff, we've, you know, looking to make sure that we're maximizing the claim reimbursements from CARES and FEMA. And just being able to have that structure that folks can function at home remotely and still keep trains going.
Thanks, Anne. So next steps, this evening was sharing with you the, the LRP. We're going to move forward with putting together our draft instructional budget and, and follow, and follow the calendar right from there. We wanted to try and get this to you a bit earlier this year than we had last year and we were successful in doing that. And I know that, that makes Anne happy, which, which is great. And I do want to take a moment to thank Anne and thank all of the members of the team in the business office, as well as Scott, Deb Hand, Deb Algarten and all of their support staff for all of the work that went into putting this, pulling this plan together throughout the course of this year. So thank you, everybody, for all of your, your hard work. Thoughts and questions and recommendations, and I think there's a bunch in the chat. I hadn't been able to look at that. I'll pull it up right now. But if there's, anybody has any questions or anybody thought, any thoughts, happy to, happy to answer.
Joe, I guess I just want to say thank you to yourself and to the business office and, and everybody who put all the time and energy into developing this plan. It's a lot of work that goes into it. I know it's a roadmap and by the time you finish it, some of those early assumptions have already changed because that's the way these things work. We also know as the public looks at it, sometimes it looks a little bit like a tragedy when you look at those out years. And that's because I think when Dr. And that's because I think when Dr. Teich is going through this, there's a lot of very conservative estimates in there and they should be conservative estimates because we really don't know a lot about what's going on right now and and where we are. But again, I think it's I think it's a really good document. It's a working document for us to use. Let's not forget, we had the Comptroller's Office earlier in the year too. And I'm sure Dr. Teich, this was something that they asked to look at. And this is a plan that also shows up on our webpage. So our visitors and and everyone else who wants to get a better understanding of our district, something for them to look at and and learn a lot more and and create that visibility and and transparency that we all know is very important. And this was something we also talked about in our in our finance committee. I know that was on your first page where just about a week ago, we looked at it in our finance department, finance committee group. And I I know you spent a lot more time on those 84 slides too, and I really appreciated that. So just just thank you. It's a good tool and I know this is something we look back on as we as as you look to do that planning for the for next year and the following years and as you make decisions. It's it's a helpful tool.
Thank you, Jim.
Joe? I I just wanted to comment. I mean, that was a huge number of slides and it wasn't even the whole plan. And it just underscores how much work and what goes on behind the scenes in order to make schools run. And so what most of us see most of the time is sort of what's on the surface, but there is so much beneath the surface. And so I just want to really, you know, congratulate everyone in the district that works so hard. It's, you know, people on the front lines, you know, it's teachers, staffs, staff administrators. But then there are also so many people and so many departments in the background that that make everything work in our district. I mean, it's just tremendous. You were you were sounding a little like losing steam. There were so many slides and having, you know, as board members, you know, we've read this and gone through it a number of times. It's huge. It's huge what we do in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. You 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 saw my trick. I I threw it to Anne so I could take a sip of water.
Yeah, it for my purposes, COVID, you know, has not changed the extraordinarily extraordinary amount of work that gets done, as Cheryl said, behind the scenes and and during the day. And in fact, people are working harder than they've ever worked. Our teachers, our staff, everyone is working, you know, way harder than it has ever been possible to do because we've learned from March when we knew nothing about this and we reinvented the wheel and managed to come up with an educational system that is working for our students. No, it's not perfect. It can't be perfect. It's during a pandemic. But the amount of work that all of our teams have been doing is extraordinary.
And and Randy, I'd like to echo that. I mean, we're in a a period of time, we're trying to control something that's not controllable. And that adds layers of complexity and difficulty far beyond what we could have ever imagined. But I I agree with you.
Well, I just want to thank all the trustees. And I know you've heard this presentation several times. You've read it several times. But thank you as well for your insight and your your critical eye as we've been planning. We're we're gonna, obviously, this is gonna, this is a working document, as Jim was talking about. We're going to be making changes. We'll be breaking it out into the proposed pieces of the of the proposed budget to share, of course, with the trustees and the community as we as we get a little bit more into the winter months. But it's a solid start. And, you know, I think by having that solid foundation, and and you're right, it's an enormous amount of work at every level, all throughout the organization. And and I and I really do appreciate it. And I know our team members appreciate appreciate it too, of your recognition for all that hard work, despite, you know, what whatever happens to be happening, whether it be a pandemic, whether it be a super storm, whatever the case may be, right? You're always, you're you're trying to continue to to move forward positively. So thank you very much for that. I do have, I know I've been talking for like three hours now, but I do have two quick items, but they're really important. Well, make that three. I I do notice that in in the chat and that and I appreciate folks chatting and 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 sharing their thoughts. I I see that there's conversation related to Wednesdays. And, you know, what I'll say again is the reopening committee is committed to constantly looking at everything we're doing right now. We almost, we we're looking at it almost on a daily basis, but certainly on a weekly basis. When we can make adjustments that are going to be advantageous to our children and and will continue to be safe, we're we're definitely going to do that. I know that everybody's experience is is a little bit different. Everybody's experience is a little bit unique. And and I and I absolutely respect that. You know, we we talk about trying to to figure out how to meet everybody's needs as best as we can. And that's everybody. That's our children. It's our parents and guardians. It's our faculty and staff members and our administrators. And and just for all all of the 85 people who hung in there tonight, from 115 at our highest point, I I want you to know that every bit of the feedback that we get, we listen. We listen to it. We wrestle with it. Sometimes we think about it when we were trying to go to sleep, but it's always there. So, you know, I I hear teachers talking all the time and and usually talking with me about, you know, is what we're doing sustainable right now? It's not. It's not sustainable forever. We know that. And and we're trying to figure out ways to support our faculty and staff members and bring that level of of complexity and anxiety and and stress down in any way that we can at the same time as serving our children as best as we can. And and you know, just like, just like Randy said, it's it is absolutely true. Everybody is working harder than they've ever worked. And and you know what? They're doing it because that's what they do and they love our kids and they want to try and and do the best that they possibly can. So for those of you who who are are just, you know, having 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 a struggle right now, know that that we we are looking and trying and working hard to reduce that struggle in any way that we can. Is the holidays? The holidays can be can be a tough and stressful time regardless. We talk about this in in terms of our children and recognizing that, you know, the holidays don't necessarily translate to a fun time for everybody. And and so we're conscious of all this and and we really are working hard to to support everyone as best as we possibly can. But that feedback is important. And, you know, we might not necessarily be able to do something about it immediately, but it but it's it's always taken. It's always weighed and it's always put into our our thinking process for for the future as well. I also want to echo what President Ellers mentioned about our work with the Equity Committee. I don't know that there's necessarily any more important work than than the work to try and make sure that all of our children and all of our educational community members have an equitable opportunity for success in our organization. I can tell you, these are tough. You know, it's 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 tough and it's it's hard. They're hard conversations sometimes, but they are so, so important. And as somebody who participates in those regularly and don't, you know, they're they're hard for everybody. You know, I regularly make mistakes. This is work that we're committed to, work that we're going to continue moving forward and making sure that it's part of everything that we do for our children because every single one of our kids, regardless of of who they are, deserves an opportunity to have the best possible educational experience and and really to explore their passions and their dreams for as long as they're a member of the White Plains City School District community. So we're going to keep reporting on that. Upcoming is a potential draft equity policy for the board to consider. That's going to be forthcoming. We're excited about that, as well as branching out into our building level equity committees. All good stuff, all all good, hard work and all focused on our kids. So again, with that, I I wish everybody a very happy holiday and 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 a healthy holiday. And I thank you for your attention this evening and and all of your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ricka.
Dr. Ricka, can I just say say a couple of words? I know that I say this at almost every single meeting and I'm going to keep saying it. The way that we are teaching and the way that we are learning is new to all of us. Our teachers were never trained to teach this way. And we are all learning as we go. To say that no one is learning and no one is teaching and there's nothing going on on Wednesday or any other day is very disturbing to me. Everyone is teaching their own way. Students are all learning their own way. Some are handling better than others. Some are struggling more than others. But in my opinion, even if we have a shortened day, even if there's no work on the weekends, so be it. I really believe that we all need downtime. We all need that time to catch up on our work. We need that time to just relax and do nothing. And our teachers need the extra time to plan, to work together, to individually contact their students, which is not something that they can do while they are working remotely, in person, online, with people in and out of the room constantly. It just, it it can't happen. And so I'm going to keep reiterating that our teachers and our students all need our support right now. And if there's anyone out there who feels that they're having such a struggle or or such a difficult time, I'm going to encourage you to please reach out to your te- your individual teachers, reach out to your building administrators. Ask for whatever support you or your child need. And please keep in mind that we are all trying very hard to support our staff and our students and we're struggling together. And we're hoping that the next few months, we will all be able to start to get back to some semblance of normal. But I'm going to please, again, keep asking everyone to be patient, to be understanding and to be supportive of each other.
Rose, thank you. Can I just, Joe, just really quickly, I don't know if some of you have heard the story, but a few weeks ago, I was walking in my neighborhood and I came across a family. And their fourth grade daughter asked me how they handled this when I was a kid. I said, they never did. You know, we occasionally had a snow day, occasionally closed after a storm. But this is new and I want to echo everything that Rose just said, that our folks are working tirelessly, amazing hours. And the day, because of the technology, there's no end to the day. So teachers are receiving stuff at 11 o'clock at night. We have to support one another through this and we will get through this. And the kids are incredibly adaptable. Yes, some are struggling more than others. As Rose just said, reach out to the teachers, building level, reach out to anyone. You know, we're all here. We're all here to support you. We're here to support the staff and we're here to do the best that we can under these circumstances.
Thank you, everyone. And, you know, our students are remarkable and and we appreciate their feedback as well. We're in this together and we all have a common goal. So if we work together towards that common goal, we'll see our way out of this. And just know that our staff is doing everything within their reach during school, after school and on the weekends to make sure our students are supported and that they feel safe and that that the teachers are available and all teaching staff are supporting any student that needs extra help. Thank you all. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on. I'm sorry, Dr. Ricka?
Well, I was just, I was going to say thank you to to all the trustees. I I know it means the world to to our our faculty and staff and administrators to know how supportive you all are of them. It's important. And 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 I just, I know, I know that they're really appreciative for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next, we're moving on to our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're going to move on to our individual action items.
Rosemary?
Yes?
I'm so sorry.
Yes?
Yeah, I just, thank you. Just more for me, right? I'd like to draw your attention to the donations. And we we'd like to to thank everybody for for their very generous donation. Five Stop and Shop gift cards from Michael Sullivan to support Rochambeau School families, $250 from Rose Aglico for the Morton Zucker Memorial Scholarship, $100 from Dee Househouse Necht and Sue Brumer, $100 from Amy and Michael Weiner, $100 from John and Eileen Troyes, $250 from the Hamby family, $100 from David and and $100 from Elizabeth Cassidy, all for the Greenstein Memorial Music Scholarship, as well as donations from the MAS PTA for the enhancement of the Outdoor Learning Center at MAS. Thank you all very much for your generous donations and support.
Thank you, Dr. Ricka. Next, we're going to move on to our individual action items. The first item is a resignation. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the resignation of Dr. Jacqueline Manning Campbell, Director for Human Resources, effective at the close of business on December 11, 2020. May I have a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We certainly wish Dr. Campbell the best in her her new role. We know she'll be phenomenal. It's it's a a big promotion and our thoughts are with her as she pursues this opportunity. Next, we have a resolution regarding our support during COVID-19. And you've heard Dr. Ricka's comments earlier on this. The Board of Education of the White Plains City School District calls upon the New York State leaders to ensure that public school districts receive financial, logistical and regulatory support to undertake mandated or board-approved COVID-19 surveillance testing of students, faculty and staff to ensure the school districts are not forced to keep school buildings closed due to lack of resources to ensure the safety of students and adults in the school buildings. Do they have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the appointment of Maggie Rusty B. O., Nurse Coordinator Districtwide to the pandemic-related position of District COVID-19 Coordinator, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, for the stipend amount of $20,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a memorandum of understanding. We have the recommended approval of the following side letters. Virtual Extended Day Side Letter of Agreement between the White Plains School District and the White Plains Teacher Association. Intermittent Leave of Absence between the White Plains School District and the Civil Service Employee Association. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Are there any questions? We have our backup on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rosemary, that was for providing tutoring or extra services to kids outside the school day, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I'm conflicted on the Teachers Association item, so I need to abstain on this vote.
Next, we'll move into board discussion and have our committee report.
Yeah, on, I'm I'm sorry, on December 8th, we had our curriculum meeting and it was really interesting. Joe mentioned it during the Long Range Planning Report, how
Joe mentioned it during the Long Range Planning Report, how various programs are being reviewed. And this was a deep dive. There's a committee conducting a deep dive into writing across the district. Doug Cronk and Jennifer Hammond King reported back to us, and it was very, very interesting. It's a wonderful committee that's been put together, and they're really looking at the question, what are the what are the daily writing experience of students K through 12? And how is writing being incorporated into curriculum? And it was just a it was a really exciting meeting. I I love writing. I love spoken word. I love the written word, looking at research and how we really can explore ways to get people more comfortable, kids more comfortable with writing, expressing themselves, essays, what, you know, whatever it is. And Deb Deb Hand, thank you for that. Thank you for that work that's being done because it was really very, very interesting.
And the work continues. So, you know, there's going to be the development of a five-year professional learning plan, developing, you know, mission and vision for writing in the district, sharing, you know, findings with curriculum coordinators and building leads, reviewing grading and assessment practices. So it is ongoing robust robust work that is happening with writing.
And Rosemary, the Special Education Committee did not meet, but I just wanted to say that I visited the Microsoft SharePoint resource for that was created for special education and PPS staff, and I have to just say it's absolutely an exceptional resource. There's been additional enhancements to the website, and what they have on the website basically just says what we've been discussing tonight, that how what the challenge is during this pandemic, reaching our most at-risk students. But they're providing a community where they're looking at communicating, adding tools for a toolkit for teachers, innovating, almost like a one-stop hub for all things special education referrals. It's just a a tremendous resource that's available to all teachers in in the district.
Finance Committee, Finance Committee met, and we talked about the Long Range Plan all 84 slides. And HR met, and we can't talk about HR meetings.
That's right. That's right. Thank you, everyone, for our committee report outs. And before I close out for everyone, thank you so much for attending this board meeting. And for all of our staff and colleagues, please, please, please accept our most sincere thanks for what you all do as staff in this incredible district, for what you do every single day, for keeping our kids safe, for being there for our kids, for extending your time on the weekends and after work, for just going above and beyond for finding a way to reach our children so that they learn and they grow. We know this is a difficult time, and it is amazing what you do to make this work. Please accept our thanks and our most sincere admiration for everything, all of our staff, for what you do every single day. We would like to wish you all a peaceful and enjoyable holiday. We are confident that 2021 will be better than 2020. Science will win. Have a wonderful and happy holiday and New Year. And with that, unless there's anything else, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you.
You safe.
Thanks, everybody.